All right, it's six o'clock and we'll get started and I'll call the meeting order and, boys, you did the place, please. And Pam, would you be our chaplain as normal? Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to come together to make decisions for the benefit of the citizens of Mount Pleasant. And God, we just pray especially for safety going home tonight and for community the next few days, um, as we have some potentially difficult weather and we pray for our first responders as they care for us while we go through that. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank y'all ladies. Roll call, please ma'am.
Ms. Knowles?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
And then Mr. Davis is not here today.
Yeah, uh, I'll be briefing this, but Mr. Davis gave us a call this morning and he has had a little bit of a medical issue and they told him to take it easy for a couple of days, so everything appears to be fine, but he's gonna be out for the evening, so, he does have the package and is aware of everything and, uh, so that's nice. Um, glad he's doing well. All right, approval and correction in minutes. We have two sets, one from the study session of the sixteenth and one from the regular session of the twenty-first, and I'll entertain a motion to approve once you've had an opportunity to review.
I make a motion that we accept the study session from January sixteenth and the regular session from January twenty-first.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen? Y'all show. Words, presentations, and appointments. We have two new police officers to swear in tonight.
He went from the shortest to the tallest. David, officer, so that he's from Lewis County, this is, uh, Todd Eamon, he is from Lawrence County.
All right.
Great to have you gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Can I do this swearing in together? Or do you want me to do it? Sure. Okay, so you all will repeat after me, I'll give you one of the, um, aye and state your name.
Aye.
Name is David.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department?
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution?
To uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The State of Tennessee?
The State of Tennessee.
And the ordinances?
And the ordinances.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute?
I will faithfully execute.
My duties in accordance?
My duties in accordance.
With the general orders?
With the general orders.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department?
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So there we go.
Half my bullet.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you, please be safe, and hey, I want to thank all of your coworkers that came to welcome you into this, because you, you are gonna be working with a great group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna get into some appointments pretty quick through here, mayor's appointment, and then we'll get this ratified or whatever you want to call it afterwards. Can we do all these in one, or you think it'd be best due?
Do them one at a time, but all four of them are appointed by you and ratified by the commission.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, first one is to the Historic Planning Commission. What we're gonna do is ask Pam to replace Ms. Granberry as the city representative for that, and Chris Irvin for his new term that expired in just at the end of the year. So I'll make a motion that we approve.
A second.
All those? Motion carries. Mayor's appointment to Planning Commission, Pam to be the city appointee on that as well, please. I'll make that motion.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Mayor's appointment to the Power System Board. Ms. Willie has served on that for the last two years?
Mm-hmm.
And has enjoyed it, and they have certainly enjoyed having her there, so I'd like to continue to ask Willie to serve on the Power System Board, please. Now I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Recreation Committee. Ms. Lori has agreed to serve as the city rep on the Mount Pleasant Recreation Committee, and thank you for doing that, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Completion of review and unfinished business from prior meeting ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven twenty-nine. This is a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven twenty-five. Said ordinance appropriating revenues and expenses to operating and maintaining the City of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July the first twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. And these are the updates that we're gonna have of that, and I want to say this right quick. I talking to Philip and Shipper this morning, I understand that a couple of people of the commission have called and asked some questions about this. Thank y'all. Thank you. Really.
This thing.
I emailed, uh, my notes to everybody last week and then I was resent them this morning. Most of the highlights as far as the budget amendment goes are in those notes. The biggest items have been grants. We received the FEMA grant for the fire department, which was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, so that's in, in the amendment in the general fund. We also received, um, the CCF grant for our parks department, so the parks budget went from being two hundred thousand to almost two million dollars. The grant itself is two million dollars, so, um, I've budgeted the whole grant. Of course, we're not going to spend the whole thing by the end of this year, but just to be protective of us starting the engineering processes and everything is gonna start here in the next month or so. It's gonna probably run for two years, the grant is gonna be, so you will see that grant keep coming back on the budget amendments or in the actual budget, um, when we start the new fiscal year. But general, um, the highway safety grant for the police department, we have the ABC grant, that's the senior citizens grant that we do with the art program. The fire and the FEMA grant that I mentioned earlier, the VAC truck grant was another big one that hit all the funds. So we've had a lot of grant funds come through the budget in the last six months, and most of that I try to budget upfront. The Bond Street Fire Hall with the freeze last month, uh, that's another item that was a big one in the general fund, because, um, I've budgeted the repairs already. The claims are going to PP and it'll probably take a few months to process, but I budgeted the expenditures already, because we have to go ahead and, um, get the repairs done. Trying to think. What else? The police supplements came in. Gov deals, we sold a lot on gov deals, we sold about fifteen thousand in gov deals on the general fund this year. Just old police vehicles being sold, and then, of course, we sold in the utilities as well, the old tractor selling and some of the old trucks that we sold, so a lot of gov deals revenue, but if you all have any more detailed questions, the raises I did mention that last month are, are at the study session. We are planning on doing the raises, I've allocated all of that. Most of those amendment items are not an increase in budget, they're just moving from the insurance line overages into payroll lines, because we budget extra for insurance, and if our insurance increase is not as much as what was budgeted, the difference, we end up using it towards raises. Just a minute.
I guess I have a question, where is the sport betting revenue?
It comes from the state, and when people bet online, they pay taxes and it comes to us, if anything of the sports betting online happens in our area, the state writes us a check for it.
All of them, you see advertising?
The online betting.
GM and all that? We get a cut of it.
And it's more revenue than we expected.
I've seen it.
Yeah, I don't get it, exactly right. It's not coming out of my pocket.
Hey, I'll take it.
And then the transport, uh, another new revenue we received in the last twelve months was transportation modernization, so that's in the amendment too. That's where I think the state came out with a new tax for all the electric vehicles, so we get a little bit of portion of that that's in the general fund now, so. Trying to think. Oh, yes, that's a good one. The animal shelter had asked for an increase for seven thousand dollars, I think they came down to three thousand in a conversation with the mayor, so that is in the general fund budget, so we've already given them ten thousand that we obligated for this year. They had asked for another seven, three thousand is in the budget amendment, so if you all vote and it's a consensus, then it will, we'll have to write them another check for three. Next year's request is seven thousand in addition to the ten, so total of seventeen.
Did you hear that many animals picked up?
So three thousand is what, um, I was told to add in the amendment for right now, um, but again, like I said, it's in there, if you all vote for it, we will pay them, if you all don't want to vote for that one, that's of course.
And I don't mind telling you, the negotiation started at seven, it came down to five and I still said no. Got to three and I said, okay. Well, I'm with Willie, we don't get.
No, we don't have that many.
But it is a very viable.
Do we, Michael? We get a lot of calls? Can you?
Any good questions?
Well, sorry.
Can, can we do what they do for thirteen thousand dollars? No, we can't. We do have issues with them coming out. We had to threaten to take one of them to jail not too long ago, but we did.
Because they were coming?
They wouldn't come. We had a, we had a lady get bit, her arm, we like tore her arm up and we tried to get them to come out and they wouldn't come, so we threatened them. They ended up coming after we threatened them. But we can't do what they do for thirteen thousand.
I understand though, but we paid that kind of money, we expect them to come if, you know, you want to increase, then we want to increase service.
Right.
Well, I think Michael did all he could do in that situation, threatened it.
Yeah, we got them.
Got them.
We shouldn't have to go to that level, you know?
Can you disagree with me?
And the manager there, the director, she emails the, um, reports every month, I'm forward to you all, but her email is in there, so I know that she's always said if you all have any concerns, reach out to her directly, so if you all want to concern, sure, concerns, because I know she's really pushing, um, for that increase, and of course, she wants to do the best job that she can, so I know that she always is open to any reviews and opinions as well, so. Don't have anything else unless you all have, oh, Apple Tree Lot is in there too.
Yeah.
Apple Tree Lot was closed on last month, so the general fund actually have to amend the budget for that purchase, uh, the utility funds, it just comes out of the asset, so it doesn't show up on the budget amendment at all. But the general fund, it hit the expenditure budget.
And I might have overlooked it, but the trolley, it said here, right?
The trolley, we budgeted in the last year, so we've actually already written that check, but it was six thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't know.
We've already written, all the nonprofit checks have already gone out. The only one that I would have to write now is, um, the three thousand dollars if it gets approved over the animal shelter.
Okay.
Good. Shipper, thank you.
Thank you.
One again, thank y'all for asking. It's almost been like over the years. Different, uh, before that, the others, so. All right, this is a, a public hearing and the final reading, would anybody in the audience care to speak on this? Please let the minute reflect, no one cared to? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven twenty-nine as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty, again, this is a public hearing and the final reading, rezoning property from light industrial to high-density residential, uh, and this is on Magnolia Drive across from GCP, and it adjoins a piece of property that we have already, correct Cory?
Yes.
To R three, so, uh.
The purpose of this ordinance is to rezone the property on Magnolia, Magnolia Drive from light industrial to high-density residential. As the mayor pointed out, you recently did this to an adjoining property. The planning commission held a public hearing and then recommended this rezone. The planning commission found that this location would support the zoning of high-density residential because adjacent lots are already zoned R three and light industrial, so they are equal to or greater than zoning. For those reasons, there will not be an adverse effect on adjoining landowners. Planning commission passed a resolution with the worksheet and comments attached, which was in your packet. On the first reading of this ordinance, you all made the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. You said the proposed change was in agreement with the land use plan for the area because of the homes in the area already. There would not be an adverse impact on adjoining landowners specifically, because all flood plain issues would be addressed at the planning stage of any proposed development regardless of the zone, that no plan, no property owner or small group of property owners would benefit materially from the change and to the detriment of the public, and that conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan, uh, and subsequently the zoning map. All of that was incorporated into the ordinance, and so that's in the ordinance that was in your packet. And again, as the mayor said, this is the public hearing.
Any questions from the commission? Anyone in the audience care to speak? Please let the minute reflect, no one cared to, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, monthly report from mayor. I've got a couple of certificates here, I'd like to take a moment and present to Ms. Lori and Ms. Willie, and this is from completing your elected officials account through M-TAS, and, uh, we got these in in the last couple of days, and ladies, thank y'all for doing that.
Thank you.
They said you wanted to do it a second.
No, I did not. They couldn't find my name, though, you're gonna find it. You gonna find it, Philip.
And I sent to the wrong man.
I left you alone.
Uh, one other thing I want to bring up, and I brought it up at the study session, we have a communication committee that we have had for a number of years, and we got to look in it when the, everybody's dates expire and they're, and who appointed who, so, uh, again, I just want to ask y'all over the next month, next month, if you could bring me a couple of names that you would like to have on that committee, uh, and, uh, if you could get those to Philip or Shipper over the next, whenever, that way we could get that done next month, if possible. That's all I've got, monthly financial budget report.
Not gonna do a lot on the regular monthly financials, the only highlights that I'm, was going to bring up, property taxes are coming in, general fund is looking good, they are due at the end of the month, so it's ten more days, and then property taxes should be closing out. If you look at the net position report that I had sent out, um, we have invested almost five point, um, almost half a million dollars in our water system this year. I did a little analysis with the water department this last month on how much have we actually spent in just small repairs, big repairs, and overall, and I know we started this process in February of last year after the freeze, that we're gonna start improving our internal leaks and stuff, so a water support department has done almost a million dollars, and that's just capital improvements to our system. So the surplus this year compared to the surplus we had in February or January of last year is a little bit lower, but we've also turned around and invested a lot of money in our system, and of course, we all know, like with the cold weather, knock on wood, we've done pretty good so far, so, um, we're, we're using, you know, City of Mount Pleasant water, we're not taking, um, any more from the north side of town with CPW as well, we've been sustaining our own system for, I think it's gonna be a year this month, so.
It's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. So that's really the big highlight, and then the gas, uh, system, we're working on rates, so hopefully here in another couple of months, we should be able to bring y'all something, because we are, we do need to look at those rates since we haven't in like over a decade, so.
Yep.
Don't have a lot, if you all have any other questions for me on that type of stuff.
Any questions to Shipper? Can you none entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the money, finance, financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager, Philip.
Mayor Commissioners, um, I'm bringing attention to the state of the city, um, front page is Leadership Murray, a lot of those folks in the audience.
Thank y'all.
That made the front page. Also, on the second page, you made mention of elected officials academy from Ms. Knowles and Ms. Alderson. And then the last thing of that, uh, you know, something that started was, um, employee recognition, and this month was, on second page, Mr., uh, Detective Willie Norwood, and just so say, over thirty-one years of law enforcement experience, so.
That's nice.
Yeah, with that being said, I just have a couple of updates, uh, the bridge prod, project, I talked to their chief engineer this morning through text, uh, they're continuing to work on the foundation, um, and one of the biggest things I took out of that conversation was beams set mid-March, hopefully, so with beams being set and the foundation, so hopefully progress being made on that. Downtown project, they're forming up the square, you can see it's forming out there, um, they moved the center lines on Main Street, brick pavers along sidewalks in the next few weeks, and then, um, street lights, uh, setting the pose over the next few weeks as well, so that's moving nicely. And that's all I have for the monthly report.
And I think I mentioned it Thursday night, but I asked in the last meeting and completion date, and they said no.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry, I did have, we do have two open positions right now, we're taking applications, one in the utility department and one in the sanitation department.
Okay, cool. Alrighty, special reports from other departments, wastewater.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, so from the wastewater treatment plant, according to engineers, substantial completion should be in the next three or four weeks. Remember they were saying into January, so it's still three, four more weeks out, uh, the MBR commissioning process is ongoing, and then, um, skated systems are in process, that's the telemetry like we see in the office when you go back there.
Yeah.
So once that's running, we'll be able to watch that on a hourly daily basis as well.
Good.
Consent order?
Consent order, yes, I do have that, uh, on my desk for you to sign, just then, because we're past that, uh, so Barge is gonna take care of that for us.
Good. And that continues to come out of what they're paying to us, we're paying back to Barge, right?
Yes, since that's a completion.
That hasn't happened yet, we're assessing the liquidated damages, and we'll seek that from them at the end.
Yeah, once we get that.
Thousand dollars a day, I believe.
I think so.
The PEO, the PEO for the engineering is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so we've kind of kept it separate from all of the other construction costs, that way when we get done with that purchase order, we know exactly, and the goal is that we have enough retainage that we have to pay them at the last moment, so I've kind of kept it on the retainage, and the retainage is way higher than what they're, they're gonna owe us for, uh, the engineering costs.
That's why you put a date. Get it on a project that size.
Right.
All right. Gas system.
Uh, as Shipper stated, we have symmetry, they're studying the rates, um, did you know when we met one-on-one, we identified a couple of projects that need to happen one way or the other, we're still working with engineers, um, to see how to accomplish that, um, and still meeting with the gas buyers and engineers weekly to come up with that master plan.
Okay. Any questions? New business, resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant authorizing the city to enter into a professional service agreement with CEC related to zone meters.
So this one Philip mentioned at the last, at the study session, that it might need to be deferred, and so we're confirming today that we do not have the information to put in front of you, so we do need to defer it till next month.
Entertain a motion to defer?
Motion. Make motion to defer.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five, resolution with the City of Mount Pleasant authorize city entered to a professional service agreement with CEC for implementation of a stormwater utility.
For the purpose of this ordinance is to approve a contract with CEC Engineering to create a stormwater utility to be used as a funding mechanism for improvements to be made to the existing stormwater infrastructure and prepare for meeting the potential future requirements of becoming a municipal separate storm sewer system, which is called, uh, MS4. CEC will analyze stormwater flow, number of stormwater users, potential improvements to infrastructure and stormwater rates. CEC will deliver at the end of this contract a report summarizing their findings and analysis and discussing a proposed fee structure, draft stormwater, and a draft stormwater utility ordinance. CEC previously performed a watershed analysis for the city, so they have already been involved in our stormwater. The cost of the engineering service is fifty-seven thousand dollars. And again, at a high level, a stormwater, a stormwater, I don't know why I can't say this, um, utility is a way for the city to collect funding that it would use to then have a true stormwater system, because now we don't have one, because of the size of the city, um, we don't, we're not required to have a stormwater system, but this would collect money so that you would have one in the future.
Just for everybody's information, I love going back looking in most every community our size, you know, even a little larger in this whole circle that we're in already has this. I mean, it's a, it's a real need, and we got, we've got a need. So, uh, uh, just for your information, we are not the only community this size that's looking into this. So, any questions?
No, I'm just wanting to say how much I appreciate Philip meeting with all of us and going over all that, helping us to understand.
Yeah, because that's a big.
It's a lot.
He had a birthday.
Yeah.
Yeah. It needs to be.
Yeah.
Put it in buckets.
Yeah. And it's huge.
I'm not scared yet.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not scared yet.
Yeah, I love that. All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, resolution of City of Mount Pleasant authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of residential water meter upgrades not to exceed one point two million.
So the important part of this whole resolution is the informal bid at the back of y'all's resolution, the resolution itself is all the legal language we need to get this done. The informal bid process, I reached out to M-TAS, when we started looking at the original borrowing that we wanted to do, the rate increases and everything we did for the water system, um, we were going to do one big borrowing, we were trying to look at USDA, we tried to look at, um, just the, going out to the bond market, and then we looked at the tenants and municipal bond fund, and we were gonna go with the best rate that we could get. Well, then USDA came in a couple of months ago and said they could do the big portion of our project with adding an additional skid to the water plant, they could do that with a portion as a grant. And of course, USDA has always done great with their grants and the interest rates that they've been able to give us, so you all approved a resolution to move forward with that process. That left about a million dollars behind, uh, that we still needed to start our water meter, residential water meter exchange, um, throughout the city. We have already had a grant to do the industrial meters that have already been bid out, so that should be starting soon, but the residential meters, we needed to do a small borrowing, the borrowing being one million, one point two, just so we had some wiggle room, was so small, they're going to market, paying for closing costs, paying for underwriter fees, paying for, um, getting rated again through Moody's, um, I reached out to M-TAS and they were like, yeah, you're gonna end up paying a lot in fees for a million dollars, I would say, maybe try to stay small, but I wanted to make sure I covered my bases before I did that. I reached out to all the banks and all the local banks, and that's what's listed in your informal bid, the rates they gave us, and then one bank decided they didn't want to pursue it at all, um, and United Community came down with the lowest rate, um, and had the lowest fees, so there's a fee structure on the second page that pretty much tells you what all the banks kind of were going to have for any kind of legal counsel or any other kind of fees. So the proposal today, or the resolution today, is written for us to move forward with United Community. What this resolution does for me is approves this whole packet for me to submit to the controller's office, and of course, till the controller's office approves it, we cannot have a closing with the bank, so that's the next step for me, is you all approve that[1708.04] That's the next step for me is you all approve that we move forward with doing the one point two million dollars with United Community Bank. Going to be a semi-annual payment, and it matures in seven years. But after three years, we can pay it off. If we have enough money in the bank, we can go ahead and pay it off without any penalties. So that's, the terms are in the packet as well. The last few pages has all the terms listed in it as well.
And you are, if you approve this resolution, you're also approving that term sheet as well from the bank.
Any questions to Shipper? Pretty well spelled out right here. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
We've done, entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash six. With law to bank United, United Community Bank. If I need to say it. And I assume Shipper has read all of the legal forms and we could.
Cory.
Cory.
We have. We've gone ahead and plugged in all the terms into the form. This is actually the one that the controller uses, so.
Okay, so I'm okay with it, so I'll make a motion that we go with it.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant in opposition to House Bill number eight ninety-five and Senate Bill number two seventy-five, and Cory, I'll spell this one out pretty quick if you're all right with that. Uh, thi- this is a request from CPWS. There has been a request again through the House and the Senate of the state of Tennessee to reopen the Monsanto property is at landfill. And the city of Mount Pleasant stands in opposition of that. Um, as well as I know the governor's been putting a lot of money in preserving the duck as well, and that's the big reason why this is done. Cory, anything you'd like to add to that?
Just the technical part that this is, there's proposed legislation that would remove protections from the scenic rivers act, um, that would affect certain parts of the duck like the mayor mentioned, so it, it does come with a landfill, but it does other things as well. It would remove, uh, protections from, I think, seven or eight different parts of, uh, rivers in Tennessee. Um, as we learned on Thursday, or most of you already knew, we do get water from the duck, so this is another reason that we would oppose this legislation.
Correct. And as you can see from the resolution, there are all these small rivers in our area that are our area. It's a, it's a must need. All right, entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve that mission twenty twenty-five dash seven as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant to approve a cooperation and cost sharing agreement regarding a feasibility study on a proposed transmission line from the Cumberland, Cumberland River to Murray County. This will be done through, um, Harpeth Valley Utility District as well as Mallory Valley Utility District. It would bring a thirty-six mile line down from roughly south of Nashville all the way to northern Murray County. Um, initially it'd be thirty million gallons a day. Uh, it appears right now it'd be treated. Uh, over time, it could go to sixty million a day. Uh, it's a need. And our cost sharing part, Philip, was.
It's five point percent, uh, five point six percent of the total project, and it's twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents.
So, um, we would be an end user through CPWS. Um, and we could go back to USDA to get some of the money to help do a pump and some other things to get the water here. So, uh, I mean, over time, folks, we got to have water. It's reality. So, um, Murray County Water, City of Columbia, and Spring Hill will also be a part of it.
But the purpose of this resolution is to authorize the city to enter into that cooperation and cost sharing agreement regarding the feasibility study of the proposed water transmission line that the mayor just outlined with those parties, so. Mallory Valley has already engaged the engineers, and you are basically agreeing to share in the portion of the cost.
Is this a one-time fee?
They would come back to you if they exceeded this amount.
Okay. Do I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight?
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hydro repair quote.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, in your packet, and we talk, uh, you have a quote from Greg Roberts. Um, uh, business that we use to do our hydrant maintenance, um, it's twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. You also had the lead cards. Dale, you meant to help me, because I didn't write those numbers down, but I believe it's about ten thousand gallons a day out of those hydrants. And you know, our goal is to make sure that we're selling the water that's going through our pipes, so it's just part of the overall improvements to our system.
That's one of those things that'll pay for itself. So, that being said, entertain a motion to approve the quote.
I make a motion that we approve the hydrogen repair quote.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. East merchant bid approval?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, it's our recommendation, I prefer these bids, um, the high bid was six, over six hundred thousand, and the lowest was right at a little under five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the goal when we started this project is to fix the hole in the road. It turned into sewer and water and just all the rehab, so for seven hundred feet, um, just, I think it's in our best interest if we just fix the hole in the ground, so we're going to get, uh, city staff, when they get a chance to rip up that part of the street, lay in the pipe and then spot paint, we're back over top of it.
Anybody in agreement with that?
I'm agreeing with it.
They can do it.
Yeah, they can do it. They got the equipment now. We got the people. Got the good people, Dale, thank you. All right, uh, entertain a motion to deny the bids.
I make a motion that we deny east merchant bid approval.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a number of seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Arrow Mines restroom bid approval.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I was going to take this off agenda, but I failed to do that, but we did not receive any bids. We're going to put it out for thirty more days. Um, as I stated in the study session, if we don't receive bids on the next go around, I'll sit with our talented staff and try to find time to do it ourselves, but it's going to happen.
Yeah, we'll get it done for you.
Josh.
July before.
Josh Security Dale.
Cory, we don't really need it.
No.
I didn't think so. All right, utility write-offs?
I went over a little bit of this at the study session. This is, um, our write-offs. If you look at the list, uh, this list does not become part of your agenda, so that's why I leave copies on your table. After the meeting, I will collect the copies back up, because this is utility accounts information, and it's confidential information cannot be published. Um, but if you look, most of the first page and a good, and half of the second page is prior years. Twenty twenty-four total, it's about sixteen thousand dollars, so you're just approving the list because the list has never come to you, and I'm about to get probably new, well, not probably, bidding out the auditors. I'm getting new auditors, and I want to make sure if we have something written out in a resolution that we're going to do. And we just discovered that in the last few months that these lists, the way they were being brought to you are not in this much detail. And of course, we're updating the resolution, and I know you all gave some input at the study session that we may want to write a minimum amount in there. And I might get with Cory on that, just to see if there's a best practice out, out there, like is it fifteen hundred or what, that we don't bring to y'all and we just write them off, but because this list has never been here, I wanted y'all to have it, and then this will hit the books next year. Um, not in this fiscal year. This fiscal year has already been done, so this is going to end up hitting next year, so it's going to kind of run a year behind.
Yeah, I would like to see you getting Cory in it.
Yeah, we're going to update the resolution to make it.
Get it straightened.
It was done in two thousand seventeen, so it's been a minute that one hasn't been looked at, so. We'll bring that one back next month.
Do we need a motion to approve these write-offs? Okay. That being said, entertain a motion to write this sixteen thousand some few out off?
Well, it's actually thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six to forty-eight fifty.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four amount is sixteen and some change.
That's right.
I would make a motion that we approve the write-off.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Keith, anybody sign up? All righty. Anybody? Lori, you got anything? Willie? Oh, Lord, you're taking a place.
I just want to tell everybody to be safe, um, police, fire. If there's bad weather come in, I hope y'all have a plan for people that may be homeless. Maybe we got somewhere for them to go. Um, I think keep it in back of your mind. Maybe your house, Michael, or something. For real, though, you know, we got to keep, maybe the community center or something. So I think you said you had something maybe in place.
I guess that temporarily.
Yeah, temporary. We, we're not going housing for days at a time, I mean, months.
We had to, we could do something temporarily, but.
We don't leave them in the cold, though, you know?
Sam?
I just wanted to thank the, uh, emergency responders, but we had a little incident in our house with my husband and, um, first remember called nine-one-one, but, yeah, it was overwhelming, uh, support and how quick everybody got there. Um, one of my neighbors commented that, um, everybody arrived fast and they have ever seen it happen, and nobody knew it was me, but um, just how fast, how much the city has changed in their response time, and that's because I've been there a long time, so I was very impressed with that, but thank you guys very much.
All right, that's all I got, other than, uh, Leadership, thank y'all for being here. Uh, get a second sometime, come on Thursday, the week before, because that's where we really get into the nuts and bolts and dollars and cents. And, uh, Shipper is part of that class this year, right?
Mayor, we do. I know he's a part of Leadership Murray, but, uh, he's a ma director in the audience and is part of Jeff Hardy, so. But he, he is Murray County DMA director, now a part of Leadership Murray this year.
We're awfully happy to have you, Mayor. That being said, entertain a motion, good girl.
I make a motion that we're good.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.